Good afternoon. The time is now 1:22 PM and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education regular meeting of November 10, 2020 is reconvened. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting for public comment?
Yes, there is one individual who wants to address the board. And Mike Flamini, will you let them in, please, so that I can go over the rules? Okay.
Hello.
Welcome. Do I have Jacqueline Bell on the line?
Yes, this is Jacqueline Bell.
Hi, I will go over, review the rules, and I thank you for joining us and requesting the opportunity to offer public comment. You'll be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I'll keep track of the time. And it's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. They may contact you later. And as always, we maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. And if anyone is disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise, they'll be asked to cease. So if you would please state your name and the city that you're from, and then also if you're representing a group, and then begin offering your public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I start now?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Jacqueline Bell. I'm representing the Detroit Independent Freedom School Movement, and I'm from Detroit, Michigan, the city of Detroit. And I'm presenting a statement, a position statement on the third grade reading statute. Begin.
Please.
The Detroit Independent Freedom School Movement previously drafted and widely circulated among state legislators and others a formal written position statement in opposition to the Michigan third grade reading statute, particularly the legal requirement of retention for failure to pass proficiency exams. There is an extremely broad educational consensus that such penalties are counterproductive and pedagogically unsound. Since we issued our statement, the state's governor, its superintendent of public education, and an impressive consensus of other voices have echoed our judgment. This is a punitive law. An amendment to simply repeal the retention provision was formally offered. Even the majority leader in the state legislature has stated publicly that there should be unspecified amendments. So the bottom line of our comments to the State Board of Education is that you are the appropriate, the most appropriate state education agency empowered to convene and lead the necessary coalition efforts within and outside the state legislature to repeal this bad law. We formally ask and respectfully implore you to join with us to organize the necessary efforts to repeal the third grade reading stature. This stature is one more assault on Detroit public school children, another measure that sets them up for failure while continuing to deprive them of effective instruction. This law requires that a child be held back in third grade if they cannot pass the prescribed reading test. The very shortcomings in reading proficiency that this law punishes have been brought about by the failure of the state to properly fund, staff, and administer public education in Detroit. Hence, the law penalizes children for the failures of those whose responsibility it is to ensure their education. Children cannot thrive as learners in a system where close to 200 schools have been closed, where there is outrageous classroom overcrowding, and where the overall public culture has been dismantled. Since 1999, the Detroit public school system has been subjected to counterproductive, destructive policies and programs initiated and administered by the legislature. As a result, thousands of Detroit children have not received academic instruction that they deserve and require in order to achieve literacy. The children of Detroit, like any children anywhere, need and deserve an education. Through an educational process, children should have the opportunity to develop their understanding of the realities of our world and the responsibilities in it. Ideally, that education should be community-based under community control. It should be rich in their cultural heritage of the students, critical thinking skills, and the arts and instruction towards emotional and physical health. This is rarely the case for most Detroit children today. Under nearly two decades of state control, our schools are failing our community and abusing our children. We encourage all concerned citizens and education advocates to join us in calling out and protesting the inherent injustice and punitive nature of the third grade reading stature. We call forth to repeal, and we ask today that the State Board of Education join us. Thank you for the opportunity for me to share.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Marilyn, any other, any other public comments or public speakers?
There is, there is no one else who has requested public comment, so this concludes public comment. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. The next agenda item is a presentation of the revised model anti-bullying policy. The model anti-bullying policy has been updated to reflect the current statute and current practices. Following a period of public comment, the board will be asked to approve the model anti-bullying policy at its December meeting. Presenters today are Mr. Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Director of Health and Nutrition Services. In the department, there will be a PowerPoint presentation, followed by questions and answers. Mr. Garant, Dr. Golzinski, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, board. I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Golzinski to share the PowerPoint slides and, and walk through our presentation. Just a quick reminder that this was work that was pre-pandemic work that we started to begin in the late fall, early spring of this year, and we're happy to bring, bring the revised policy to you today.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us back. I was pleased to see that you had a little recess before lunch, and I hope that you had a wonderful lunch that fueled your mind and your body. As Kyle said, today we are talking about the model anti-bullying policy, the 2020 revision. So to give you a little background, these are the different years in which the model anti-bullying policy was adopted and revised. So we adopted the initial anti-bullying policy, model policy, in 2001. We revised it in 2006 and 2010, and then again with the original Safe School Law in 2014, as it was amended, but then not in 2017 when cyberbullying was added because the model policy was already in compliance with the law at that time. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better, Diane. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, thank you for letting me know. Okay, so we opened the public comment for the model policy back in January of 2020, and we kept it open for two months. We asked the three basic questions that are listed there on the screen, and we shared the results at the State Board meeting in March. Just a reminder, we had three responses in total for the model policy, and that public comment period was open, as I said, for two months. For those three responses that we got, all three are listed on the screen. No one said that they were interested in serving on a committee to look at the policy. One person skipped that, that potential question, or that question, and then the other responses are on the screen. So as we look at what districts have for policies around anti-bullying, there are four different options. It may be the Neola policy or the National Charter Schools Institute policy. Both of those policies are based strictly on only what's required by law. So they do not cover anything that might be best practice or, or, or good practice at the local level. A district-developed policy might be a combination of all of those. It might be some pieces of the State Board model policy. It might be some pieces of other policies or things that the district had developed on their own. And out of all of the districts in the state, only 6% uses, uses the State Board model anti-bullying, bullying policy in its entirety. So we have revised the model policy for you all to take a look at, and we plan to open this up again for public comment. This includes some updated terminology. We will include the whole school, whole community, whole child framework, as well as multi-tiered systems of supports, a more prominent inclusion of staff, coaches, and volunteers that you will find in the policy. We have assured alignment with the definition of harassment and other changes that happen in the law, those legislative directives. We have provided examples of staff training around prevention of bullying, and we have added guiding questions for investigation. So all in all, it's minor tweaks, but we do feel that the model policy is better than what we have had in the past. So as I said, our plan is to open it up again for public comment for two weeks. We plan on getting this to some targeted education associations and other key partners to specifically solicit their comment. We will analyze that public comment, and we will be back to see you in December. So what questions do you have?
Thank you, Dr. Golzinski, Mr. Garant, board members. Questions or comments for Mr. Garant and Dr. Golzinski? Questions or comments? Dr. Pritchett.
I know you put down a comment, but it's really a question. When you say you're going to open it up again and contact some targeted groups, could you give me an example of what some of those groups might be?
Sure. We, okay, I was, I was looking at you trying to decide if you wanted me to answer. We are thinking specifically principals' associations. We would look to our Regional Teachers of the Year, some key people who can really take a look at it and help us to determine if there is anything specifically missing or something that we can strengthen.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from board members? I know Ms. Ramos Montini had, had advocated for us re-examining this particular policy. Ms. Ramos Montini, do you, do you, do you care to share a reflection or two?
Yes, I would, I would like to share a comment or two. I, first of all, I'm very, very happy that we are at this stage as we revise this policy. We have to stay on top of this issue because, as I have noted before, this is the issue that many people are very concerned about. And so now with COVID on top of everything, I don't know, you know, what's happening, but I do know that, that we have, this is a topic. It's an area that we have to be diligently on top of. And so I'm really happy to hear that, that you, you're going to continue asking for more input, feedback as to the policy, and also highlighting some targeted areas. You know, you're doing everything that, that's possible to get this. I will be voting for it, and I'm glad that you do it in December, so I, I have the opportunity to vote for it. But yeah, this is a very, very complex and very important topic, and thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos Montini. The, the timing was a, was, was in fact a consideration. Other, other thoughts, comments, concerns? Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're working on this, too. I always find bullying be very tricky. And one of the comments in the, that you showed us, I thought was pretty relevant, that sometimes somebody accused of bullying may be saying that they were bullied and defending themselves, so identifying who's a bully and who's not. So a couple of questions. What, what do process procedures do you have as far as recommending for investigating before there's action? And then, I think that's, well, and then you also mentioned to align with certain laws. I'm just curious what laws you're aligning with, so.
Sure, Michelle, thank you for that question. I'll chime in, and then Diane can, can piggyback if need be. To your, to your latter question, I mean, I think Diane mentioned one main point is aligning the previous policy to the, to the legal definition of harassment was important and something that was called out in the previous policy. And then the addition of the seven factors and, and consequences that were added in statute a couple of years ago was something that needed to be added. So that's specifically called out in there around what, what district requirements are before suspending or expelling a student. So I think those are probably the two, two biggest pieces.
And due process mechanisms?
Sure. And the due process mechanisms, I mean, the Diane mentioned the addition of some kind of guiding questions for investigations that districts were, as we would work individually with districts and ISAs would call and ask us that they were looking for some guidance in that area around how to conduct those investigations. Mentioned they can be tricky, and there's a lot of different, you know, both student and potentially parental and home factors that go along, and so they want a little more guidance there. And then the due process rights specifically are, are called out are, are the same as, as they were in the previous version of the policy, that the students are afforded, you know, certain rights or responsibilities, as well as parents, and, you know, what districts' responsibilities are to the, to that end. So Diane, if you have anything to add, please, please chime in.
Yeah, and a great deal of the due process is outlined in my, yes, I am, is outlined in the Model Code of Conduct. And what we have outlined in this particular model policy are specific guiding questions to help the districts as they go through that investigation.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. I'm familiar with the student code of conduct, mostly because I have kids that I
Understood. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fecto. President Albridge?
Thank you. So I, too, am glad that we're revisiting this, and I think it's important. I do notice under harassment, first of all, it's a little bit of history. Title IX has been a little bit of a ping pong lately. The definition of harassment has been altered. It's now very strong. It's hard to meet the, the base definition now under the current Title IX regulations out of the federal government. But I noticed our bullet point does use the language severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, and it looks like that has been in there for a while. I know that it complies with current Title IX regulations, but I'm just going to put a plug in that at some point, if Title IX is revisited again at the federal level, that we, we be cognizant of that, that high bar that is set by the word and as opposed, as opposed to or. So I just wanted to, to put that plug in so that we can make sure we keep an eye on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from State Board members? Going once, twice? Hearing and seeing none. We've got a little bit of work to do between the November board meeting and the December board meeting, but it, it would be our hope and expectation that we would be able to bring back to you for your approval at the December board meeting, a revised anti-bullying policy for the state. Thank you very much, board members. Thank you, Mr. Garant, Dr. Golzinski. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Board members, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of October 22, 2020?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Or.
Support from Ms. Fecto and Ms. Ramos Montini. Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could do a roll call vote, please, Marilyn?
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly? She's calling, she's calling in as observer, so she may not be able to speak. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We are now at the point in the agenda for the report of the president. Dr. Albridge, your report, please.
Thank you very much, and I apologize in advance. I have a German shepherd at my feet who keeps discovering squirrels, so you might hear a little barking in a minute. Things have happened since we met last month, and if you're like me, you're probably celebrating the fact that we now get to go back to watching pharmaceutical ads and not political ads on TV. Little bit to celebrate, but a little bit there. The turnout for this election was amazing to watch, even though in many cases it meant having to wait much longer for results, and a few states unfortunately are still counting their ballots. But I think that ultimately it is always great to be able to see people engaging in their government like that, and so really excited to see that. We do know that starting in January, we will have two new members of the State Board of Education. So I want to congratulate Ellen Cogan Lipton and Jason Strayhorn on their successful bids for the State Board of Education. I'm not sure if they're watching today, but if they are, I wanted to extend a welcome to them who will be joining us in January. I also want to thank all of the candidates who ran for this board, including Michelle Frederick and Tammy Carlon, and seven additional candidates who ran on third-party tickets. Anyone who's run for office knows that it's not easy, and yet it's vital that we continue to attract good, qualified candidates, so people who are willing to put themselves out there for the betterment of their society. And so I just want to extend my gratitude for anyone who has considered doing that, and very appreciative of the hard work that goes into that. Next month will be the last meeting for two of our board members, Michelle Fecto and Lupe Ramos Montini, and we will celebrate them as much as possible in a safe, virtual way next month. But I, I didn't want this moment to go by without also thanking them for their many years of service, a dedicated service to the state of Michigan, and it's been a real pleasure serving on the board with both of you, and we will miss you. Bylaw changes. So last month, we found ourselves in a unique, although not completely unheard of situation, where we felt the need to reschedule a meeting. And while I still firmly believe their actions were completely appropriate, I also mentioned last month that we needed to review our bylaws and include a mechanism, a very clear mechanism for canceling or changing a meeting. So if this happens again in the future, there is no doubt in the proper channels to do that. So I've received guidance from the Attorney General's Office indicating that we can provide for this in our bylaws and some suggested language. Our bylaws allow for changes to be made to the bylaws using the following procedure. So the proposed amendments will be submitted in writing and will lay on the table between the meeting at which they are submitted and the next duly constituted meeting at which time the amendment must be acted upon. Proposed amendments shall require a minimum of six affirmative votes for approval. So consistent with this bylaw, I plan to provide language to you to submit at the next, at next month's meeting, and that will then be tabled for a month until our following meeting in January, at which time hopefully we can vote on that. So you will receive some proposed language after this meeting, and it is my firm hope that we can agree to this language, and therefore we will have a clear, a clear direction in our bylaws. And that is it for me.
Thank you, President Albridge. As far as a report from the state superintendent, it will be brief. I want to congratulate Dawn Henges of Western School District in Jackson ISD and Holly Holm of Core ISD. Ms. Henges and Ms. Holm were named Michigan's 2020 Education Support Staff Professionals of the Year and are now eligible for the National Recognizing Inspiring School Employees, the RISE Award, a new award from the U.S. Department of Education. Ms. Henges is a food and nutrition services worker at Parma Elementary School in the Western School District, where she has served the district's children for 20 years. Ms. Holmes is an administrative assistant with Core ISD in Roscommon, where she has worked for 17 years. Congratulations to both Ms. Henges and Ms. Holmes. We appreciate your fine work and your representation of Michigan at the national level. And then simply to echo our board president's comments, I want to congratulate all those who won election last week, including Ellen Cogan Lipton and Jason Strayhorn, who will be new members of the State Board in January. I also want to begin the thanking of, but not end the thanking of, current board members, Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, Ms. Michelle Fecto, who have served with distinction over the last several years on the, on the State Board of Education. That concludes my uncharacteristically brief report. We move to the report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Mr. Owen Bandano, the 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present his report. Mr. Bandano is an English Language Arts teacher at the Oak Park Freshman Institute at Oak Park Schools. Ms. Erin Carlson, Region Five Teacher of the Year, is joining us from Sandusky Community Schools. She is an English and Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics teacher in Sandusky Junior/Senior High School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Gentle people, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Rice. Let me share my presentation real quickly. So as we were so graciously introduced, I am of course Owen Bandano, the 2020, 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and joining me today is Erin Carlson, the Region Five Michigan Teacher of the Year for this year. For myself, my presentations can be pretty short this month. I feel like we just met, just those 19 quickly, and my time since that last State Board of Education meeting was mostly filled with end-of-the marking period tasks. Anyone who's been a teacher knows how crazy the end-of-the marking period can get, and also submitting my application for the National Teacher of the Year. That's been completed, and I certainly hope that my application does all Michigan teachers proud. From my district, our district has had to take a step back in light of the state's current COVID-19 numbers. Oakland County Health Department moved guidance for in-person instruction to the highest level of risk, which is Level E, as confirmed cases have surpassed the Health Department's highest level of risk according to their previous guidance. Prior to this, the teachers in my school district, Oak Park Schools, have had the choice of whether they'd like to teach virtually from their homes or from their classrooms, based on what will work best for each individual. But as a result of this new guidance, the buildings have been shifted to essential employees only, which means food service, custodial staff, technology, et cetera, and not teachers. I've been teaching from home since the pandemic began, so I'm all set up and prepared for teaching from my own home, but I know that there are now many teachers in my district who are transferring their setup back home, who until today maybe have been teaching from the school building this school year. There are two opportunities in particular that I've engaged in in these last, you know, 19 or so days that I wanted to highlight. The first of them is that, excuse me, I think my computer's having an issue. My apologies. The first is that I have had the opportunity to speak specifically with a group of students from Texas. I was, their teacher reached out to me. They're in a Diversity and Rainbow Coalition Club, and they reached out to me because these students in particular are interested. and they reached out to me because these students in particular are interested in changing the climate and culture within their own building. These are, again, middle schoolers, and so I was reached out to as someone they could access as a resource. And I had an incredible meeting with these sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, who are really passionate about building a better school community for themselves and their peers. It was a moment that really reminded me of the strength of student voice and of, of a student's capability of creating change in their own lives. And the other moment I wanted to highlight was an unofficial event that I had. Now that all of the states have announced their state teacher of the year, and since there's some, there's some lack of being sure of when we will get to meet in person in the current circumstances, a few of the state teachers of the year took it upon themselves to organize a Zoom meetup for all of us who have been named by our states, and so I got to meet the majority of them not too long ago. And just like when I meet with the Michigan Regional Teachers of the Year, it reminded me of the vast differences in education just by community and geography, and how different this job can look for, for so many different people. But it also reminded me, of course, that we are all fundamentally teaching the same thing, and that's children. So I found it a refreshing and wonderful meeting, and I'm excited to build cohort with these people as the year continues. And with all of that being said, I would like to introduce to you Erin Carlson, the Region Five Michigan Teacher of the Year. Erin, go ahead and take it away.
Hello, thank you, Owen. My name is Erin Carlson. I am a teacher at Sandusky Junior/Senior High School. I just wanted to share a few things about me. I think on the next slide, I have, this is my family. My husband is actually a principal at Sandusky High School, so we are a family of educators. I have a senior, a sixth grader, and a third grader. So this is, this is my, my family, the, my first priority here. Some other things I wanted to share with you on the next slides are some of the service projects that are happening in our community that I'm really proud of, and would just like to share with you. I am a firm believer in sharing different opportunities for students and giving all students a chance to shine. I know in, in a rural community where, like, like a place where I'm from, kids have sports and they have academics. So I believe it's really, really important to provide these kids with different opportunities so that they can, can work with the community and they can shine in, in other outlets if they're not athletes or maybe academics aren't their, their strong suit. So doing things like the Adopt a Highway, food cleanup, or I'm sorry, food distribution, different crafts. I have three sewing machines in my room that kids come down and use during lunch, and just other opportunities that are unique, but things that they can, can become skilled at. On the next slide, two of the things that I'm very proud of, and actually today we are putting up our, our flags around our courthouse. You can see some of the pictures there. We have over 500 full flags with plaques that commemorate veterans from Santa Clara County. And we'll be putting those up today for Veterans Day. That's one of our service projects that we can still do during COVID, because it's outdoors and we can maintain that social distancing. So it's just a wonderful project that brings the entire community together and gives us the ability to showcase our veterans. On the bottom pictures, this is probably my favorite activity. Started a cooking class at our district library in town, just because we don't have Home Ec or other opportunities like that at our school. Those are programs that our school cannot fund. So just, you know, that, that's, that's who I am. I, I just really enjoy giving different opportunities for students. So just wanted to show some of those things that are happening in, in rural America. We still are doing some things and providing these opportunities for students outside of the, the in-classroom walls. And the last thing I wanted to share with you on the next slide is just a new, exciting opportunity that I've been a part of, and I just wanted to bring this to you just as a, as a keep-your-ear-open for this project that is being developed right now and being implemented in different school districts across the state already. I really believe that this is the future of Michigan's education and can, can go further than Michigan. The MASSP, the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, is spearheading this project. It is, they're developing a new LMS system, which is a learning management system that is bringing business leaders together with educators to develop a curriculum that provides students with these real-life applications. So many times I hear students say, why am I learning this? When will I ever use this in the future? And that's kind of the, the big goal for this project is to show kids the jobs that are out there and to be able to apply our, the Common Core standards to these different jobs. And when will you be applying these Common Core standards in, in your future? And making that connection earlier for students, especially in, in the rural community. I know my students believe there are five careers, you know, they can go in the medical field, they can be retail management, they can be farmers, you know, just very basic career fields. They don't know many of the jobs that exist out there. Personally, I don't know many of the jobs that exist out there. So having this opportunity to connect with business leaders throughout the state and provide those opportunities for our students, I think, is going to be crucial in developing our, the future of education and connecting it to the career potential of, of our students in Michigan. So just wanted to put this out there on your radar, that this is something that's being developed right now. It will be completely free to all educators. It's free now and will always be free. Just an exceptional way to pull the entire state together and, and, you know, bring some collaboration into, into this, into our future. So those are, those are the things I wanted to share with you this month. And I invite any questions you might have about any of these things. But I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, to present to you and for all of your support throughout all of this. This is a challenging year, but I think we're all in it together, and we're going to move forward.
It is a challenging year, there's no question. Thank you for those reflections from both Owen and Erin. Any board member comments or questions of our outstanding teachers? Looking forward to getting back with you at our Regional Teacher of the Year meeting. Those are, those are great opportunities for me to learn and also be inspired as, as well. Other, other questions or comments going once?
I'd like to make a comment. Of course, I can't let this opportunity pass. Erin and Owen, outstanding presentation. I am so proud. I am so proud to call myself a teacher. I will always be a teacher, though some people call me former teacher, but I am a teacher until I die. But anyway, thank you for carrying the flag. You did an excellent job.
There's no such thing as a former teacher, Ms. Ramos Montini. Once, once, once a member, always a member, and proud. Amen, amen. Anything else from, from board members going once, twice, thrice? Thank you very much, Owen. Thank you very much, Erin. We appreciate you. The next item on today's agenda is the adoption of a resolution honoring Dr. Vanessa Kiesler. Dr. Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports, joined the Michigan Department of Education in 2010. She served with dedication, perseverance, and intelligence in the roles of consultant, manager, office director, and deputy superintendent. Board members, you are aware that Dr. Kiesler has accepted a position outside of state government. We wish her a future filled with success and happiness, and today we are asking the board to adopt a resolution honoring Dr. Vanessa Kiesler. May I please have a motion to adopt the resolution honoring Dr. Kiesler this afternoon?
I'm moved.
I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Lupe.
I have a, I have a motion, I believe, from Ms. Snyder. A second, I believe, from, I know from Ms. Ramos Montini. Any discussion thereof? Hearing none? Hearing none? I'm sorry, Dr. Pew?
I didn't say this publicly last, last meeting, but just very proud of her accomplishments and just happy for the service and, and appreciative of the services that she provided.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Anyone else? Ms. Ramos Montini?
Well, I, I have to congratulate Dr. Kiesler for her new position. She, she's going to be, wherever she goes, she's going to be an asset, and she's going to be one dynamic. You know, her presentations were so well-versed, and she will be one dynamic asset wherever she is. So I congratulate her again and wish her the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Other board members?
I just wanted to also congratulate her and Vanessa and, and thank her for always being so well-prepared, always having such a depth of information, always getting back to us with our requests for more information, and, you know, just sort of managing our questions about what's required by law and what the MDE is compelled to do, and making that clear. I just think she's incredibly intelligent and has so much to offer. We, we will miss her, and, and I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Anyone else before we vote? Hearing and seeing none. Marilyn, if you would be, if you would do the honors with a roll call vote, please.
Fecto?
Sorry, yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly? Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, the chairperson of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee, will begin this presentation. Ms. Ramos Montini?
Well, good afternoon on behalf of the Legislative Committee, Lupe Ramos Montini, the chair, and Dr. Judy Pritchett, the co-chair, and the Honorable Nikki Snyder, a member. The Michigan Department of Education liaison to our committee were Marty Eckley, Caroline Lissa, Stephen DeGrove, Marilyn Schneider, and our special guest was Superintendent Michael Rice. We met on Tuesday, September the 26th, no, October, no, excuse me. Yeah, October the 27th, October the 27th at 1:00 p.m. And we didn't have a long agenda because there's not many things that are happening in the legislature, but Marty Eckley will take us through the two sections that we're going to be talking about, which will be the, the budget and also items that we are possible, Bill, that might happen during the lame duck. These are possible. There might be others. So Marty?
Thank you, Lupe. First, I'd like to follow up on what Dr. Albridge had on the election.
You're muted. You're muted, Aunt Marty.
How's that? Good. So I'd like to follow up on what Dr. Albridge had mentioned with the election, is that the House of Representatives in Lansing was up for election or reelection, and next year, the House will remain in Republican control with a 58-52 majority. There were two senators, even though the Senate was not up for election, there were two senators who ran for local office. Senator Pete Lucido was elected Macomb County Prosecutor, and Senator Pete McGregor was elected Kent County Treasurer. So at the end of this session in, in December, they will leave for those new offices. So there'll be two openings in the Senate. The Republicans will still have a 20-16 majority, and it'll be up to the governor to set those elections to, to fill those positions. So let's go back to the meeting that we had on October 27th. You may recall last month in October, we did go over the budget as it was passed. So in this meeting, which is like a week after the last, the delayed board meeting, we discussed the teacher and support staff grants that were in the budget. And these were, this was money, this was federal money that was put into the budget in providing $53 million for eligible K-12 classroom teachers and $20 million for eligible support staff. It's, it was, it was in recognition of the work that they, that they have done during the COVID pandemic, so they can receive a grant through these two programs. Teachers can receive up to $500 if they have performed at least 75% of their standard instruction workload in brick-and-mortar classrooms during the last school year prior to the suspension on April 2nd. And the, and the school support staff can receive up to $250. This is a one-time grant, and the Michigan Department of Treasury is working with, has been working with us and school entities and other education partners to implement the programs. I know that Treasury has had multiple meetings and webinars with the ed organizations to, to get the school districts ready for this. There was a deadline of yesterday for the school districts to send the grant forms to the teachers and the support staff, and they have, I think, until December, I'm not sure the exact date, in September, to get those forms back for the teachers and support staff, to get those forms back to the school districts for them to send into Treasury. And the Treasury expects to have those grants to the teachers and support staff by February of 2021. So that, so we discussed that. And then we also discussed in the last board meeting all of the lame duck possibilities that could be brought up by the legislature, as this is the end of their session in December. And so there were a lot of bills that were, that are on the, either have already been acted in one house, the Senate or the House, and have gone to the other, or they've been on the floor. So these are all possibilities of coming up for action. And so I know that Dr. Rice had mentioned in his comments this morning that there were some lame duck discussions with the ed organizations. They, the legislature will go on break after this week to go on their Thanksgiving or slash hunting break through the end of November, and they will come back in earnest in December to finish out their, their session. Depending on, you know, it could be depending on, on, you know, the severity of, of the pandemic, whether they come back, how often they come back, actually in person to vote on these things. So that is still up in the air. We expect them to do something in lame duck. How much is still up in the air? We don't know yet. And that's what I have. The next Legislative Committee meeting is November 24th. My throwback hooks, throwback to Ms. Ramos Montini or Dr. Rice?
Well, that concludes our presentation, our report today. And so now I pass the table back to Superintendent Michael Rice.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos Montini. Thank you, Mr. Eckley. I'm looking, it does not appear that Board Member Tilly is with us for a National Association of School Boards of Education report. Any questions or comments for Ms. Ramos Montini or Mr. Eckley on our legislative update?
This, this is Marilyn. I just want to alert you that State Board Member Tilly is joining the meeting. She's just not able to dial in to speak right now.
Okay, all right, very good.
I have a question, if I could.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the, the legislative report that you just presented, is that the same that, is that provided to us? I'm looking on the agenda, and it looks like the report on the agenda, hyperlinks is different than that. So I was wondering if I could get a copy of your legislative?
I'll be glad to send that to every, every member, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Going once and twice? And thrice? Can't blame a guy for trying. Thank you very much. Thank you, dental folks. We move on, board members. Comments by State Board of Education members? If you could just indicate in one way, shape, or form, either real hand or virtual hand, that you would like a hand into the comment session? We've got some virtual hands. Mr. McMillan?
Thanks, Dr. Rice. I just would like to say that I'm disappointed that so many districts are going back to remote learning. I, and, you know, I heard the word incontrovertible. I know that there are thousands of doctors that, and health professionals who feel that the direction of lockdowns are a real big mistake. I'm looking at the Barrington Declaration, Great Barrington Declaration. I heard, I heard an interview with Sunetra Gupta, who is a liberal. She identifies as a liberal. She's an epidemiologist at Oxford University. She was one of the three that spearheaded it, also an epidemiologist at Harvard, Martin Kulldorff, and then Jay Bhattacharya, an MD/PhD from Stanford University, public health policy expert and professor. And they, along with many other experts, including Michael Levitt, who received a Nobel Prize in Chemistry in 2013, and others, you know, said that, they said that "Coming from both the left and the right and around the world, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term public health. The results, to name a few, include lower childhood vaccination rates, worsening cardiovascular disease outcomes, fewer cancer screenings, deteriorating mental health, leading to greater excess mortality in years to come with the working class and younger members of society carrying the heaviest burden. Keeping students out of school is a grave injustice." And, you know, they do talk about focus protection. That would be something that should be done for those at higher risk. Looking right now at the CDC website where they say, quote, "The risk of complications for healthy children is higher for flu compared to COVID-19." You know, I certainly know that there's nothing incontrovertible about these lockdowns. There's thousands of people, scientists, very high-quality and qualified scientists and medical people who disagree with what's going on in most parts of the country. And, you know, I think it's not helpful to just kind of say it's beyond debate because even the experts have changed their minds several times in the last six months, those that are currently advocating for the lockdown. So I, I again am disappointed at the number of districts that are moving toward remote. I think, as I had mentioned, you know, for teachers that are 49 or less, they have a higher risk of death by driving, and, you know, when they're driving their car to school than they do even if they contract COVID. So, and students have, you know, an eight-time less of a chance compared to being in a car or walking, unintended fall, like I mentioned last month. So I, I don't think it's helpful to suggest that, you know, it's incontrovertible and that there shouldn't be at least discussion and debate. I think, you know, there's just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Ramos Montini?
I want to go back to this morning. All the presentations were outstanding and very relevant to what we're going through these days. The COVID presentations, the clean air in the buildings, in the classrooms, and then the other one of exercising that even I need to exercise more. So, and because that stress, and they emphasized the stress level, the health level, many different things that I think are very relevant to our students, the teachers, all educators, and us as individuals. Another presentation that I'd like to highlight on is the Top 10 in 10. Of course, I say this all the time. This is very dear to my heart because the late Brian Houston is the spearhead of this concept. But I'd like to say, I'm looking at Dr. Rice, because I see the logo. If you move aside a little bit, Dr. Rice, we can see the logo. And I love the improvements you made on the logo. I like how you highlighted the little boy sitting, the student, and then all the little buildings and the color. It's very eye-catching. So I think that's what the top 10 in 10 should do. Catch everybody's interest and commitment and determination that we are going to move this state forward. And also, I didn't concentrate too much on the charts, the numbers, and I just don't mix. But I did like, and it caught my eye, and I concentrated on the efforts that are going, are being moved forward to make it even better. And one of the other issues that I was very passionate about was the teacher shortage because a lot of our students end up in classrooms with 50 students and one teacher. And so when that happens, you know the teacher can't teach, and you know that the students are not learning the quality education that they should be provided because there are just too many students in one room. So teacher shortage is another big, big problem. Besides bullying, teacher shortage is number two for me. So anyway, so the efforts to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage, they are giving us very specific ideas, additional efforts to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage, very specific ideas. And then I love the last one, additional efforts to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. And one, number one point, it says focusing on the recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. To me, that's very, very powerful. Everything that we have, we do has to have that word focus or being intentional, and then I feel strongly that we're going to get there. So I want to thank Sheila and Leah for their, oh, it was very well put together, top-notch, top-notch presentation. And I love the forward approach that they're taking into making Michigan top 10 in tenure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos Montini. Other comments or question, other comments from board members? Board member comments?
I have some written in there. It's okay.
Ms. Snyder, please. Yep.
Just a few, a few things. And some of them are probably worthy of taking on today and others not so much. But I would really echo what Tom is talking about, the inconsistency in the COVID conversation that's happening. There's almost so much inconsistency that you can't quite keep ahead of who's not being consistent with who and what was said, and whether or not it's really science-based. And that's definitely, I would say, the tone that I'm hearing more so than not. And when it's rooted in fear, eventually people get tired of the inconsistency, and they lose trust. So I have a problem with that. That's one of the things I'll probably be sort of weaving into discussion as we move forward. The other thing is funding. We talked about funding. A lot of the narrative that we talked about, even within one of our presentations this morning, was inaccurate in terms of the way that Michigan funds. It is not a local-based tax system. Prop A moved it away from that to a state-based tax system meant for funding equity. And so that's something I will steadfastly discuss out of the truth of how we actually fund in our state. But one of the things I wanted to share with the whole board today is an email that I got from a Michigan citizen that was talking about literacy. Oftentimes, I think we spend more of our time together here at the table discussing, you know, whether or not the third-grade reading law is appropriate or not, as opposed to really tackling what's important to get kids' literacy skills, all kids' literacy skills. So I'll just read you a couple of things from her email, and then I'd be happy to forward it to everybody at the end of the meeting. She starts out her email thanking us for the work we do for our kids. She said, "I'd like to bring to your attention the issue of Michigan-supported ELA curriculum that focuses on teaching kids to read using cueing, kids using meaning and sentence structure to predict words as they read rather than decoding, also known as phonics, matching the sounds and the words with the letters used to spell them. Considering the legislation passed to ensure all children can read by grade three, I believe you'll agree that our state's approved list of ELA curriculum and teaching methods are not getting the job done. With only 32% of Michigan's fourth-grade students being at or above proficient according to NAP's 2019 report card, the legislation was timely and greatly needed." She's scrolling down, and this email talks about in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, the district realizes that they have a serious problem as far back as 2015. And according to npr.org article, "Switch to a learning-science-aligned phonics program." She quotes that in 2015, before the new training program, more than half of the kindergartners in the district tested below the benchmark score, meaning most of them were ahead in first grade at risk of reading failure. At the end of the 2018 school year, after the science-based training, 84% of kindergartners met or exceeded the benchmark score. At three schools, it was almost 100%. So her email has a lot of really good information that we've talked about over the last several months. When we talk about ELA standards, we talk about reading literacy. If we could take the politics out of that discussion and start to really dig into what would help our kids. I would love to do that in the coming months. And so I'm going to forward that to everybody, and I just appreciate your time and enjoy being at the table with all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
I'm coming, I'm coming. So I just wanted to again echo what President Albrecht mentioned as far as congratulating the two board members that will be joining us. I don't want to talk about Michelle and Lupe just yet. I'm going to hold that off as long as I possibly can. But just thanking our educators for coming earlier today and always so grateful and thankful for their continued energy in this time that we find ourselves in because they are the frontline workers and those that are, they are protecting our children as they're teaching our children. And so also want to, just again, as Dr. Pritchett always does in these months since March, thanking our educators and just letting them know that we appreciate them and we're there for them. At this time, we know that a lot of schools are closing because there is just stress on all of our systems, whether we're talking about our hospital systems or whether we're talking about our education system. We can talk about the data, and we can disagree with the data, but if you don't have educators that are there to show up, just looking at the data that we were shown by Ms. Breen earlier today, we know that there are issues with teacher shortages. And then when you have this stress on the system that we continue to try to force, and it's just not going to work. We can deny the science all we want to, but the bodies won't be there to educate our children. I also want to thank the department because, again, there's been a lot of back-and-forth banter that we saw today, whether we were talking about looking at the quality of the buildings and making sure we're protecting our children from risk of exposure, or whether we're getting our children moved. You all were not just talking about it, but we were able to move some things forward, and that is what this time has to be about. We cannot continue to argue the science. We just need to move in what we know is right before our eyes. And I just thank you, Dr. Rice, and the staff for allowing us to move forward in that way.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any other board member comments? Any other board member comments going once, twice?
Maybe. I'll take the opportunity, since I only have a couple of meetings, to comment. I wanted to, you know, I'm watching my, people in my family who are teaching and the stress that they're under. And as my husband always says, he wants nothing more than to be back-to-normal, teaching face-to-face. He really hates teaching remotely. But, you know, given the spikes that we are currently experiencing, which I have heard medical reports that actually opening the schools contributed to the spikes that we're experiencing now. And, you know, I know everyone out here is grappling and doing the best that they can, especially new teachers like my daughter, Josette, who are really putting out all-out effort in this. And I just wanted to recognize and thank them again for all that they're doing and to hang in there. And hopefully, this vaccine that everyone's talking about will bring us some relief.
Thank you, Ms. Vekto. Before I wrap the meeting, I would just like to share one or two clarifications. There was a word apparently used earlier in the day, incontrovertible. Not sure to whom it is being attributed. From my vantage point, my single-person vantage point, what's incontrovertible is not that any community stay home or educate children in person. Those are local decisions in our local system of public education in the state of Michigan. What is incontrovertible is that we take mitigation strategies, that we implement them all, including but not limited to the wearing of masks, social distancing, the cleaning of hands, the disinfecting of surfaces. I think all of those make more possible being in schools for those children, of those parents that want their children in schools. I want the maximum number of children to be safely educated in a school space by educators who are able, at the current time given their health, to educate in school buildings. But I want it done safely. It can't come without responsibility. Freedom comes with responsibility. And that responsibility is around those mitigation efforts. So the more we mitigate, the more we offer the opportunity for those families that want in-person education to have it, the less we focus on mitigation, the more we crank up our numbers, the more we make it less safe to go into school buildings. So it's very, very important that we do our work outside of schools so that we can do our work inside of schools. So that's one thing. The second thing is, is that there may have been some misunderstanding in the teacher, in the presentation by Claire Barnett. The operating dollars in Michigan are overwhelmingly state revenue. There are no capital dollars whatsoever from the state of Michigan for our school buildings. I was referring to capital dollars, capital needs. Those are exclusively the financial province of local school districts. That was clear. It remains clear. And it is a source of great inequality and by extension inequity in the state of Michigan. A child simply by virtue of where he grows up could end up having a very, very different experience simply because of the tax base of his or her jurisdiction. Now, schools of choice has changed that to some small degree, but not enormously. And the reality is, is that many poor and working-class children, not simply in Michigan, but across the country, are unfairly treated as a result of this circumstance. The dollars for capital needs for those major building issues, roofs, boilers, chillers, ceiling tiles, flooring, dish- roofs, boilers, chillers, ceiling tiles, flooring, additions to schools, replacement of schools, and, 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 all of those are done either with sinking funds or with bonds, province of local property taxpayers. That is fact. Except charter. That's a problem, and that's a problem in our state. And it's something that's, quite frankly, Michigan has company across the country in this regard. There are very few states that provide dollars for capital needs. So I just wanted to clear up that to the extent that there was any confusion about that. Future meeting dates?
Do you think charter schools should get capital dollars?
I'm sorry?
Do you think charter schools should get capital dollars? Any?
I think it's an interesting policy question. I do think, though, I do think, though, that the...
If they're privately owned, it's different.
Yeah. I do think, though, irrespective of the details, leaving this to local property tax bases is not the answer. How exactly to work that through is a question. I'm happy to contribute to that conversation over a period of time. I think my position on charter schools is a little bit different from most people on the board, perhaps everyone on the board. We all have our unique positions on charter schools. Mr. McMillan? Next three board meetings are December 8th, January 12th, February 8th, all Tuesdays, all at 9:30, all regular meetings, something to stay tuned for. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify either Marilyn or me. Let the record show that it is 2:34, and in terms of gifts during that gift-giving season, at 2:34, we are adjourning 41 minutes ahead of schedule. Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good day. Be safe.
You, too.